I'll to order the May 2nd, 2018, James City County Planning Commission. To my left is Mr. Holt, Director of Planning. Mr. Holt, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Leverens.
Here.
Ms. Leverens is an at-large member. Mr. Polster.
Here.
Mr. Polster represents the Jamestown District. Mr. Haldeman.
Here.
Mr. Haldeman represents the Berkeley District. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt represents the Roberts District and is this year's Vice Chair. Mr. O'Connor, who's an at-large member, could not be with us this evening. Mr. Croft.
Here.
Mr. Croft represents the Powhatan District. Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Mr. Richardson represents the Stonehouse District and is this year's Chair. I'm Paul Holt, Director of Community Development and Planning for the county, and sitting to my left is Mr. Max Halevin, our Assistant County Attorney. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. We will now enter into the public comment period. During the public comment period, topics are discussed that are not subject to a public hearing, and each speaker would have three minutes for public comment. We do have speaker cards this evening, and the first speaker is Mr. David Roebush. If you could state your name and address as well, please. Thank you, sir.
My name is David Roebush, 3237 Oak Branch Lane, Tohono. I live in Stonehouse, and I'm here to speak about the Land Bay Five, I'll call it a problem to members of the community. Land Bay Five, as well as Land Bay Three, are right at our front door, and with the kind of cramming, I'll say cramming lots and lots of residences into Land Bay Five would totally change the impression of somebody coming into our neighborhood. The neighborhood now consists of almost entirely custom-built homes with lots of townhouses and crammed-together residences. It will totally change the impression of the community and lower our property values. And the Stonehouse ERC, Environmental Review Committee, which is the committee in the neighborhood that looks at building, looked at this about two years ago at the request of the Board of Directors, and I'd like to read you two sentences from their report of two years ago. Both of these land bays are situated near the entrance to the development and will have a significant effect on property values for all homes in Phase One of the Stonehouse community. Should the owners of Land Bay Five request a higher-density development, the current residents of the association at Stonehouse should vigorously oppose its adoption, and is recommended that the board make the community aware of any requested change in density. And I totally agree with these two comments. And I would also comment that members of the community were not informed by the board that this was happening. We just kind of found out about it by an email that went around the end of last week. So it appears to members of the community that this is being done in the dark of night, trying to slide it through, and we're totally against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Marvin Rhodes.
Good evening. I'm Marvin Rhodes. I reside at 9809 Hidden Nest, also in the Stonehouse area. Members of the Planning Commission and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to the transfer of density units in the Stonehouse community. We've been residents of Stonehouse at Mill Pond for nearly 18 years and have enjoyed the beauty of this well-planned community. We were informed recently that the Board of Directors of our association has taken a favorable position toward the current developer's proposed plan to dramatically increase the currently permitted dwellings in Land Bay Five by a factor of three. The board has done this without informing the community. We heard about this proposal before the commission on Thursday, April 26th, even though I'm not aware of how it had been before the Stonehouse HOA and the county staff for a number of weeks. Consequently, the community has been afforded no opportunity for input. As Land Bay Five is located at our front door, we believe that having a high-density development in that location would adversely affect the initial impression of anyone who might be interested in purchasing property in the community, and it is not compatible with prior low-density development in the community. The application states that the developer proposes to build fewer units within land bays one, three, eight, and 14. However, some clarification is in order. Land Bay One is no longer owned by the developer, as it was sold to the owner of an adjacent parcel known as Moss Creek Marketplace. This is done for a retail establishment in that area. The table in the application also shows no change being proposed for Land Bay Three, even though they claimed that there was a reduction in units for Land Bay Three, and Land Bay 14, the table also shows no change being proposed. The units in Land Bay 14 were reduced by 41 units. The reduction in Land Bay 14 is due to unbuildable terrain in the area. This allocation should be transferred to Land Bay 12 or some other tract owned by the developer. Since Land Bay 12 has already been developed at half the allocated amount, why should the developer be allowed to recover his poor planning at our expense? The proposed concept plan violates the recorded agreement dated December 3rd, 2007, between the former owner and 2007 Board of Directors, on which the community has come to rely for our protection. One of the critical provisions of the agreement was that the developer had agreed not to construct any apartments or condominiums in Land Bays one, three, five, and eight of Phase One.
Mr. Rhodes, sir, your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I request that you not approve this and speak against it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Tran from Kaufman and Canoles. Good evening, Mr. Tran.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tim Tran. I'm attorney with the law firm of Kaufman and Canoles, 4801 Courthouse Street in James City County. It's my privilege to be here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant in this case, the developer. I think the DRC was well briefed, but just for the benefit of the commission and the public that didn't attend that meeting, I'll just give a brief overview of the basis for the application, and it really does stem in large part from the agreement that Mr. Rhodes just mentioned. There's a private agreement that exists outside of the proffers and the zoning restrictions that are imposed on Stonehouse between the developer of those land bays in Phase One in Mill Pond Association and the association. And it poses a number of contractual controls, which I think the president of the HOA will speak to in more detail, that gives the HOA a lot of discretion about what happens there, ultimate discretion about what happens there in terms of architectural approval, design, unit type, and mix of units. So in trying to engage in the land planning for what the vision for those land bays that exist within the Phase One, as we call it, or the Mill Pond HOA purview, the applicant engaged with the board as the appropriate counterparty in contact to talk about what was the best way to achieve a mutually agreeable vision for the development that could occur in there. And the result of that discussion, that negotiation, is embodied in the density transfers, congregating or aggregating meaningful open space that's really in the heart of the community. Land Bay Eight truly at the entrance to Mill Pond Run, and Land Bay 14 existing sort of in the midst of the existing homes and developed areas, and sort of pulling out the intrusion of that construction and that development, placing it across the street. And Land Bay Five, which by the way is not a highly visible land bay as it's been described, it's over 300 feet away in its narrowest point from Fieldstone Parkway across a golf fairway that has sort of a mature tree line along portion of that road, and then there'll be obviously a buffer on our site as well, and there's proposed to be entrance landscaping. And other things that the developer and the HOA will have to agree upon in terms of the architectural and design standards is sort of Phase Two of this development planning and process before anything can happen to actually put to fruition the density transfer. And last but not least, just for frame of reference, the existing master plan says that the max density that's appropriate for Land Bay Five is four units per net developable acre. That put it at about 200 units, and we're obviously well below that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker this evening is Dom Mullory.
It is one of those names, Dom Mullory.
Mullory, my apologies.
I live at 3324 Sawyer Way in Stonehouse. I am the president of the association at Stonehouse, and the Board of Directors has been in discussions with the developer regarding the density transfer. This is not a new subject for this neighborhood. We have quite a few successor developers for the completion of Phase One. In 2007, we did enter into an agreement with the then-developer, which put in some controls on the control of the number of units in Phase One. It also limited the types of units, acknowledged that the association environmental review committee would review and approve or disapprove of all plans, and that the developer and the association would work together to establish design guidelines for the units that would be built to complete Stonehouse. The agreement also references the developer's contribution to the cost of landscape planning along Fieldstone Parkway. It's a good agreement, and it's rather unprecedented when the association is able to have such an agreement with a developer. The association has been able to continue having a good relationship with the current developer and recognizes that new housing construction has changed in the past 10 years. The Board of Directors for the association has the authority to make the decisions for the association, and the board supports the density transfer for the following reasons. Overall, it does reduce the density in our Stonehouse community if you include all the land bays that they're talking about and how it's moved from one to the other. Not by very many, but there's a slight reduction. It eliminates and reduces land in Land Bays Eight and 14, resulting in the reduction and elimination of grading, clearing, and construction traffic that would be disruptive to our current environment. As mentioned, Land Bay 14 would go from 45 units to four, and Land Bay Eight, which sits right on the corner as we enter, from 40 to four, and those 40 were to be townhouses, and now would be individual homes. It condenses nearly all the development impacts to the Land Bay Five, which sits outside the current residential footprint, as mentioned, across the street, reducing the impact on current residents. Consolidates BMPs and infrastructure that the HOA must manage in perpetuity, and benefits the HOA as it impacts on future resources that we could minimize. The agreement, the 2007 agreement, will require a modification, and the association and the developer are aware of that. We are in negotiations with the developer on various impacts and issues that will arise when completing Stonehouse. As with any community, we never have unanimous agreement on any issue. Owners had different points of view, and you've heard some of those already tonight, and opinions on how our community should be completed. As the Board of Directors, we are looking at what is the best interest of our community as a whole, and based on our due diligence, the board supports the development, recognizing that our association does have that agreement.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker this evening is Willow Twyford.
Good evening. I'm Willow Twyford. I live at 9962 Mill Pond Run in Stonehouse. I've lived in Stonehouse for approximately 14 years, and I'm not going to address any of the specifics that the other speakers have because I'm kind of a novice at this. I'm a bit of a newbie. But what I would like to bring to your attention is that this community, up until about a week and a half ago, had no idea that these density transfers were being considered and being voted on by the DRC, the Planning Commission, and then the Board of Supervisors. We were kind of blindsided. We don't have, we as the neighbors, don't have a communication network that's as sophisticated as the association's. We've cobbled together our own network of neighborhood representatives. There are 11 neighborhoods. We have delegates from each neighborhood, and we share information. We're a conduit, and we share information to these various neighborhoods. We don't have the resources that the board and the HOA has. So for us to get this information out to all of our residents is kind of choppy, kind of iffy, and a lot of people are less informed than I am. Like I said, I'm a newbie. I'm just asking that you consider allowing us time to make these ramifications truly known, because this is going to completely change the character of our community. Instead of having slow developments of 60 units here and 45 units there, we are looking at having 174 units land on us all at once, all at the same time, which could potentially be 500 people. It's going to be a big strain on our existing amenities, which will then give us significant increased costs. I realize that the new people who join the association will be paying assessments, but it's going to put a strain on us. It's going to accelerate the way we grow much, much more than we had expected. So I'm just asking you to please give us a little time. Let us get it out there. Let us educate our residents, because in the last several days, I've been getting a lot of feedback. A lot of it is confused. A lot of it is annoyed, and like I said, we just weren't given an appropriate presentation. We had no idea this was coming. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker card, Carolyn Lot. Lot. Good evening, Ms. Lot.
Good evening.
If you could state your name.
My name is Caroline Lot. I live at 9804 Loblawie Court. I'm a member of the association at Stonehouse. I understand that our board has sent you a letter in support of this change. I am opposed to this change, as are many others in the community. Unfortunately, our board has failed to communicate with us on this issue. I learned about this change just prior to the DRC meeting, at which I asked if there was a possibility that there could be a deferral, but Mr. Tran, I believe his name is, declined my request. The DRC voted, and here I am again. But I wanted the deferral because the members of the association were not aware of this change. It was, I came across it on casetrack. So I mean, I tried to gather the information and went down to see what I could do. But I would like you to know, just as background, that we have a lot going on in our community right now. I would like you to know that over the last few months, our community has been struggling with the issue of whether to vote to purchase the Tradition Golf Course at Stonehouse. The course has been on the market since last year. The board has been working on various options during that time, but was not ready to communicate these options until earlier this year. As you can imagine, members have many questions, and they continue to have many questions, about voting on whether they want to incur additional costs and give more authority to the current board. Timing is everything, and this kind of came up in the midst of all of this, so people are a little bit confused about everything that's going on. Members learned of the potential density change not from the board, but from a group of fellow members referred to as the neighborhood reps, which Willow had just mentioned. The reaction to the change has not been positive. The reaction to the lack of community has not been positive, and I believe the reaction to the developer is not positive at this point. The prior developer, who was David Guy, shared his vision of what he wanted to do with the land bays with the community. We haven't heard from this developer. Again, timing is everything. I am still hopeful that this change might be deferred until the members of the association can be informed of what's really going on, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And just as another point from something that someone else had said, in the agreement from 2007, we had agreed that the developer would build an additional 178 dwelling units in Phase One. Right now, we're up to about 210, based on the density change. Unless, but they still have to change the agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lot. Next speaker is Robert Spencer. Evening. State your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Spencer. I live at 9123 Three Bushel Drive in the Stonehouse Division Orchard Hill Section of Stonehouse. As you heard already, we just really heard, the residents really just heard about this project very recently. I heard about it on Sunday morning and was shocked to hear about this proposal because there had been no communication about it before at all, I ever heard. The thing that's really surprised me was the board has conducted public hearings concerning the purchase of the golf course, and as I understood, the board pledged to share the, to hold hearings, hold public meetings, get the input from the residents. That has not happened in this occasion at all. We just heard about it Sunday, and almost as a complete fiat by the board. The ERC that we have, the review committee, has been totally bypassed. They don't know anything about it. The board, there are many concerns that we have about the project, questions like density, parking, intersection modifications, an additional RV lot, recreation amenities, BMPs, and so forth, future development. There's just lots of questions, and we need some answers, and we are not getting them at all. We've had zero communication about this from the board. To our concern is, you know, one of the concern we had was, at one point, the total number of units that would be, additional units that would be built in these different areas would be 180. It's now 186. Not a great difference, I agree, but still, it's different, and there's some of the layman areas that are not being heavily built in at all. What's going to happen with those? Is suddenly we're going to get, you know, told that there's some more units being planned for those lot bays? So we're just not getting communication at all, despite of the promises that we would get them. We think there are a number of issues that need to be talked about and resolved, and so we ask that this be deferred for at least a couple of months till we get some information that we are looking forward about this project. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Our next speaker is Joe Tennant.
Thank you. My name is Joe Tennant. I live at 3515 Splitwood Road in Stonehouse at Mill Pond. Excuse me. I am appalled and deeply upset that my association would send you a letter two and a half weeks ago without letting our community know anything at all about this. They didn't even tell us about this meeting tonight so that we could come and attend. Fortunately, we're going to have an association election in a few weeks, and perhaps we can throw the bums out. Now, there are seven board members. I think there's 592 lots and homes. If we assume two adults per household, that's very likely over 1,000 voters in Stonehouse who are opposed to this measure. We will remember at the next election. My question to you is, what about the overpass that was supposed to be built at the other end of Fieldstone Parkway? You let 600 homes come in under Ryan Homes, and you did not require that overpass that was part of the original plan to be built. Now you're going to let another 200 in at the other end of Fieldstone? No overpass? And how about the traffic lights? Is the county going to pay for traffic lights on Route 30 and where Fieldstone crosses Mill Pond Run? So who's going to pay for those, or you're just going to give them a pass? Thank you.
Sir, thank you. I have no other speaker cards this evening, but if there's anyone else here who would like to speak, seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment and move on to the reports of the commission for the Development Review Committee. Mr. Croft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee met at 4:00 PM on April the 18th. Mr. Polster, Mr. Schmidt, and I were present to review two cases. The first you've just heard about, it's C-0018-2018, Stonehouse Density Transfer 2018. The DRC considered a proposal by the applicant to build fewer homes in land bays one, three, eight, and 14, as well as track 12, and build more units in Land Bay Five. This density transfer will result in an overall decrease of 59 units in the development, as well as provide additional open space. The applicant was appealing a decision by the planning director that this proposal was not fully consistent with the adopted master plan. Because this proposal affects a large number of housing units, as shown on the Stonehouse master plan, and does not meet all four criteria of Section 24-23 of the zoning ordinance, staff was not able to approve this request administratively. However, staff did recommend the DRC approve the proposal for several reasons. One, the proposed conceptual plan meets three of the four criteria in Section 24-23 of the zoning ordinance. Two, while the changes are significant within individual land bays, they are not a major alteration when considering the overall Stonehouse development. The proposal minimizes environmental impacts and increases open space while providing for a more logical neighborhood arrangement. One resident of Stonehouse was given an opportunity to speak and stated that this proposal had not been widely communicated to Stonehouse residents. The applicant had obtained approval from the Stonehouse Board of Directors and also provided a letter of endorsement from the Stonehouse HOA. And as an aside, the purpose of the DRC reviewing this particular case was only to determine general consistency with the adopted master plan. There was no public hearing requirement or anything like you would see in a normal legislative case. And so based on that, the DRC did vote three to zero in approving the density transfer as being consistently consistent with the approved master plan. Case number C-0024-2018, Lightfoot McDonald's remodel. The second case was also an appeal of a planning director determination that proposed revised architectural elevations were not consistent with the approved 2014 master plan for the McDonald's restaurant. The approved 2014 SUP and conditions would have brought, would bring the existing legally non-conforming fast-food restaurant into compliance with the M1 Limited Business Industrial Zoning Ordinance, and the applicant at that time had agreed to rebuild the McDonald's further back on the site and reduce both seating and parking, use building materials and colors similar to those used for the Lightfoot Marketplace, install a 50-foot community-character corridor buffer, and other conditions. Instead, at the April 18th meeting, the applicant proposed to retain the existing non-conforming restaurant and remodel the interior and exterior. Such a renovation would not require a site plan, and thus, there would be no triggers to implement the previously approved SUP conditions. By a vote of three to zero, the DRC found the proposal to be inconsistent with the previously approved master plan, thereby upholding the decision of the planning director. Specifically, the revised elevations contained architectural details that were different, and the revised proposal violated Section 24-23 of the zoning ordinance, in particular item four, which states that changes to the master plan may not, quote, "significantly alter the character of land use or other features, or conflict with any conditions placed on the corresponding legislatively approved case associated with the master plan." That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Croft. And for policy, Mr. Haldeman.
The Policy Committee met on April 12th at 4:00 PM. The committee continued to review strategies for addressing impacts associated with legislative cases dealing with bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, traffic impact analysis policy, the county's natural resource policy, and its archaeological policy, all of which were formally addressed through proffers per the requirements of various adopted administrative policies. In preparation for this Stage Three discussion, staff prepared a draft revision of the current pedestrian accommodations requirements of Section 24-35 of the zoning ordinance.
ordinance, extending those requirements to bicycle facilities per the adopted Regional Bike Ways Plan. The draft language also allows for current exemption and exception criteria for pedestrian accommodations to apply to bicycle facilities as well. With regard to traffic impact analysis, James City County relies on the Virginia Department of Transportation as a reviewing agency for administrative cases to identify if onsite improvements at project entrances, such as turn lanes, are required. The Policy Committee accepted staff's recommendation that they add language to Sections 19-30 and 24-151, Paragraph 2, which more explicitly addresses VDOTs and other reviewing agencies' roles in the subdivision and site plan administrative approval process. The Policy Committee then reviewed such draft ordinance language for submittals, requiring a developer to make satisfactory arrangements for performance assurances, including improvements required by agencies, including the VDOT and the James City County Authority. The draft also added improvements required to those agencies to the list of issues considered by the planning director, zoning administrator, and planning commission when considering site plans. Staff also drafted an adequate transportation facilities test. Along the lines of the existing adequate public facilities test, a rezoning or SUP application will pass the test if no site improvements are required by the traffic impact analysis, or if those that are required are guaranteed in a satisfactory form. In this Stage II, the Policy Committee reviewed draft ordinance amendments prepared by staff, which added the requirement to complete and submit a Phase I study for archaeology or initial species inventory in the case of natural heritage, as a submittal requirement for site plan and major subdivisions, and the standards and specifications applied to these submittals. The amendments also included several exemption criteria in the proposed ordinance amendments as requested by the Board of Supervisors. The committee decided that these amendments sufficiently addressed the impacts, excuse me, and that a Stage III review was not necessary. Staff will consider several minor changes suggested by the committee and forward the completed drafts to the Policy Committee prior to the next Planning Commission meeting. Under new business, the committee discussed the need for performance standards dealing with the placement of outside sales facilities, such as ice lockers and propane refill stations at stores along community character corridors. Staff will explore administrative solutions pending further discussions at the next committee meeting. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Crop. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are typically determined to be non-controversial. However, a planning commissioner can pull any item for discussion. There are three items this evening for consideration, the two DRC committee action items, and our minutes from the April 4th, 2018 meeting. Anyone like to pull one of the items or make a motion?
Just ask a procedural question?
Sir?
These aren't public hearings, as Mr. Crop already mentioned. If, if we do pull one item, and can we decide to defer it? Or?
We would have three choices if we were to pull an item potentially, where instead of the minutes, we're at one of the DRC items. And I believe those three options would be...
You could potentially defer it if there was additional information specific to the DRC action item that the commission needed to reach its decision point. I would recommend you don't defer it just to defer it. So really, with that, much like any item on your consent agenda, the options before the commission would be to affirm the DRC vote on that one, to not be in support of the DRC action, would effectively deny the request, or you could potentially remand it back to the DRC for additional further consideration. Again, if, if there was the thought or belief that there was some substantive information the DRC may have missed or didn't consider as part of their deliberations.
Can I clarify? Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
Chairman, I would like to withdraw item two for discussion.
I'd like to pull item number two, that's DRC Committee Action Item C-0018-2018, Stonehouse Density Transfer. Okay? So with this item pulled, would there be a motion for the other two within the consent agenda?
So move.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff is available if you have specific questions of us, otherwise, the item is open for your discussion.
Thank you.
If I could just elaborate a little bit for the, the Planning Commission, one of the, this is a very difficult case, because, as I mentioned earlier, it should have been just a pretty cut and dry discussion of, is the density transfer consistently, generally consistent with the master plan? But what, and, and we talked about this at the DRC as well, that obviously, there was an internal communication problem on the behalf of the, the Stonehouse leadership and in getting the word out to the residents. And that was one of the reasons why it was suggested that we possibly, that the applicant defer in order to go back and conduct some meetings and so on, so forth. But I just, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, from, from my standpoint on the DRC, I don't foresee any additional substantive information coming forward on this, but it is a situation where, out of deference to the number of people that showed up tonight, it does, I think, warrant some further discussion. It's just very unusual that we had, had, I think this is unique in my 12 years on the Planning Commission, that we've had a situation like this, that a consent agenda item had such a turnout speaking against it, so, just to frame it a little bit.
I, for my part, I don't have any questions about this, and I, just, I wasn't at the DRC meeting, I'm sorry to say, but just reading your report, it does seem like this application is consistent, more, basically consistent with the master plan. And convey a bias, I'm generally in favor of greater density with greater open space, kind of a modified clustering is what this appeals to me, which I think is good for the county overall. But I'm really troubled by the fact that this, that this has been advanced to this stage without any community interaction or anything like that, and I'm not sure what I can do about it.
As a point of procedure, is it inappropriate to ask Mr. Trent if he would defer in lieu of some of the comments that we've seen?
I think the item before you denied is before the commission for action.
Correct, because what we have is a DRC decision, and then that, that is what we would be discussing and considering, in fact. And with the three, with the three options, as Mr. Holt recommended, we can either affirm the decision of the DRC, you know, deny this, or then, or third choice, remand it back to the DRC.
Really, just a bit, just to draw a distinction between what you all normally see as a legislative consideration, either via a rezoning request or special use permit, where it's not uncommon, applicant may choose to stand up and request deferral. Because this is a DRC action item, this really isn't following that same process. Again, not to take anything away from any of the concerns, but procedurally, the zoning is in place, those number of units are permitted, and the decision really is whether or not this concept plan and this proposal is substantially consistent with the overall master plan. So you don't have as many options as you do on a typical land use case. And again, that's because it's different, because the zoning ordinance allows for these transfers with a, without requiring a public hearing process, that's the reason why the public comment period has not been built into the code or built into this process.
Oh, I will say, though, that some of the concerns that the members of the DRC had when they reviewed this thing were the buffering and the impacts onto the bay and the other surrounding areas, as well as one of the other items that I think appealed to us was that the one very heavily mature wooded area was not going to be impacted at all with any kind of construction because of the limited number of homes that would be built in there. So that screening stayed there. I did ask the question, if you recall, about the traffic impact piece, and we did have a review of the study that was recently done that the developer is required to do on a yearly basis to update that study, and they were far, far from any of the bumps that the VDOT would ask for in terms of a traffic light. And that study included all of the proffered entrances and exits, and they came nowhere close to it for it. And that was a concern, I think, of us in terms of increasing the density specifically there at the entry, and what that would impact on the rest of the residents. We were kind of assured about the buffering piece that was going to take place and what existed there, so that the impact was mitigated, we thought, for that, for what it's worth.
So I understand, Mr. Holt, that this Planning Commission, our decision, doesn't go to the Board of Supervisors?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a DRC action item, and it follows a separate process.
And Land Bay 1, has that in fact been sold? What I'm, I mean, that's what one of, one of our speakers said. And so, the question is whether that would perhaps be new information.
Good.
It's my understanding that it is owned by a separate entity, but that agreements were put in place at the sale that limited the number of units, and that that had been done previous, I don't know exactly, the exact year that that was done, but there was already a agreement in place that restricted the number of units for that Land Bay 1.
So is that now still part of the Stonehouse master plan? Okay.
Two questions. One for staff, I guess, both for staff. One is, how common is it for an applicant, a developer, to come to the Planning Division and request density transfers within an approved development? That's my first question. And my second question is, is there a mechanism hypothetically for the Stonehouse community to come back to the planning staff and say, you know what, we want to pull our previously approved density transfer and stick with what was in place before that?
So to answer your first question, it's, I wouldn't say fairly common, but it's not atypical either. We deal with many of these throughout the year, especially in the instances of these very large master planned communities, Kings Mill, Governor's Land, Ford's Colony, certainly Stonehouse is the largest by far with well over 4,000 units approved. And at the initial land use approvals and the initial rezonings, again, at a high level, at the end of the day, you just don't know how many units can go into each land bay. You don't really understand or figure that out until the point when you're ready to move into development of those land bays, and you better understand the environmental conditions and the topography. And, you know, certainly, over a number of years, some of the vision changes and morphs, and there's a desire by the developers to be a bit adaptive to what the market is asking for, so that's, I think those are all reasons why the zoning ordinance allows for those modifications and transfers to take place internally, within the bounds of the master plan community, without having to come back through the public hearing process. Again, many of those are done administratively, without any DRC review at all. The code allows for that flexibility, and the code allows for that flexibility and to be made by the Development Review Committee as well, which is what happened in this instance.
And the second question about, can, at a, at a later date, Stonehouse say, you know what, we want to, we don't want the density transfer after all, we want to go back to what was originally approved?
Sure. So the developer or the owner of that land bay could come back and submit an updated onset plan that shows development at a lower density. They wouldn't have to come back through the process this, but they're not obligated or stuck to this specific scenario either.
So should there be enough internal to the Stonehouse community dissent, they would not have to go through with the density transfer?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And that would remain their option. They could develop it as is. And those land use approvals are already in place.
Thank you.
I, from my end, I couldn't agree with Mr. Crop more, that there's clearly a communications issue. I don't disagree with the DRC's decision in that it's consistent with the master plan. So I think we're, from, from, from the, to the degree that we're here for that particular review, to look at it in those terms, I think we have done our job from the DRC's perspective. I appreciate also what Mr. Crop is saying with regard to, perhaps there's trade space between the developer and the community at some future date as well. Clearly, once those communications build, you know, perhaps they'll re-meet and, and talk further about the details of the density transfer. So for my comfort level, I think that would put me in the category of comfortable to approve the decision.
And it sounds like, from what some of our speakers said, that there are some internal mechanisms, they have an environmental review committee that will get involved, and so there could potentially be future changes.
So with that said, any other discussion or a motion?
I'm, move, we approve Development Review Committee Action Item C-0018-2018, Stonehouse Density Transfer 2018.
Thank you. Motion for approval. Mr. Holt, will you call the roll?
Ms. Laverens?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Crop?
Aye.
And Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We move on to public hearings this evening. We have no public hearings this evening.
We have no public hearings this evening, yes, sir.
Which is somewhat rare. On to Planning Commission considerations. The first item, rezoning-0003-2017, height limitation waiver-0004-2017, Oakland Point.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Just in terms of agenda format, the reason why this is a consideration item is because, as you'll remember at the last meeting when this was deferred, staff said that when this came back for a public hearing, that we would re-advertize the case. Since that time, since that time, staff did receive a written correspondence from the applicant requesting that this case not be advertised for a public hearing tonight, and instead asked for this application to be deferred until your August 1st Planning Commission meeting. Be happy to answer any...
No vote required. That is what we will do, and that will come before us in the August Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, no.
Correct?
Attorney is saying a vote would be much preferred.
A vote would be preferred. So can I entertain a motion to approve the deferment to the August Planning Commission meeting?
So move.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, by the way. Sorry. Second item for the considerations is the initiation of consideration of amendments to the subdivision and zoning ordinances to delete references to fees which are proposed to be set forth in the county code, Appendix A Fee Schedule for Development Related Permits.
Great, thank you. I'll handle this one again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Back on April 10th, the Board of Supervisors conducted a public hearing on a proposal to create a new Appendix A to the county code, which would comprehensively list out all of the fees that are associated with development related permits. As part of that, that, it's a large transparency exercise at, at one point, because right now, all of those development related fees are spread throughout the county code in multiple chapters and different sections. So the idea that we could reformat these and have them all in one place, staff believes would substantially add to that transparency piece and make it easier to find the year or the cost of any permit that anybody was looking for. The public hearing also covered a proposal to increase those development fees by 5% as part of the county's fiscal year 2019-2020 proposed operating budget. There is a proposal in there to increase those fees to cover the, some increased costs of administering all of those programs at the Planning Division, Zoning Division, Stormwater Division, and the Building Safety and Permits Division does. As is consistent with all initiating resolutions, there is nothing in this action tonight that changes anything in county code. This merely is a procedural step required by state code. It begins the process, so... It begins the process, so staff would recommend that you adopt the initiating resolution and refer this matter to your next policy committee, where we would follow the normal process and begin those reviews of those edits with you all. And again, anything that comes out of this, certainly any changes to the zoning and subdivision ordinance, would require a public hearing by both the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, and public hearing and a vote by those bodies. So that would happen at a later date. Again, tonight is just, kicks off the process. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Any questions or?
Ms. Leverens? I just think this is brilliant. Thank you.
If, if I read the budget piece for this, that five percent, which I guess comes out to something like eighty-seven thousand dollars a year, is really to go for the IT support, not so much to help with the fees per se of the people doing the work. Did, did I understand that correctly?
No, it's one in the same. There, there is a cost to administer all of these programs. There are county resources that are required to, to, to process these permits and to do all of this work. And so, this fee does go towards that, as, as you may have heard in previous years and previous updates, the county is instituting a new suite of software that's designed to help administer all of that process. And again, with that comes some additional costs. And again, so, again, under the very large umbrella of the cost needed to administer the programs, this would go to support that.
Well, I was very happy to see that you were taking those steps on the personnel side, because if I recall, the amount of permits that, or besides houses, all the different things that are in there, have dramatically increased in this last fiscal year beyond, so they're back before the two oh eight timeframe in terms of the workload for that. And so, I'm hoping that, that argument for this can be made so that they will understand that five percent, and what in fact, we're going to get more efficiencies associated with this, as well as the workload that's increased.
But, but again, a hundred percent of these, of these fees and revenues would be dedicated towards that permitting process. So, like I say, a lot of it will go to support some of these secondary systems that will be designed to handle the increased growth and increased demand on our services. I think last year, we performed well over thirty-two thousand inspections just by the building inspectors alone, and we're, we're seeing, we're seeing consistent growth in all of our permits, and consistent growth in, in all the demands on the development related services due to our continued growth in the community. And so, you're right, I think our, our hope is, once we get this up and going, once folks get used to it, it'll provide a lot of added convenience, it'll, it'll really streamline the process. It really brings our technology into the twenty-first century. We'll have a lot of web-enabled applications, folks could access our services from their tablets and phones, pay fees online, submit documents online, be hard pressed to find a real reason for folks to have to come to the county complex anymore unless they wanted to pay cash or something like that for a permit.
Any other discussion? Can I entertain a motion for adoption?
Make a motion to adopt the initiation of consideration of amendments to the subdivision and zoning ordinance to delete references to fees which are proposed to be set forth in the county code, Appendix A Fee Schedule for Development Related Permits.
Correct. Thank you. Mr. Holt, will you call the roll, please?
Since this is a resolution, I'd like to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
That's okay. Ms. Leverens?
Aye.
Mr. Pollster?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Crop?
Aye.
And Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. And, Mr. Holt, Planning Director's report?
That's right. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, other than what's been included in your agenda packets, I don't have anything additional or new to add this evening, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to make a note that in your report, there's a linkage at the bottom there, and that report, that linkage goes to a description of James City County's housing that was done by the Virginia housing folks. And I think it's probably worthwhile if the members of the commission get an opportunity to take a look at it, because it's a nice snapshot of what's going on in James City County. And in fact, some of it may be useful for comp plan planning, as well as the next report on where we are with housing.
Thank you, Mr. Pollster.
Very robust and now well-informed update to the housing chapter as a result of the work that this task force is doing. A lot of tremendous, really good, timely data is, is being developed.
And I know that was, the, the task force update was included in your report, as well as some other items. Were there any other questions for, for Mr. Holt? Any, well, now we move on to Planning Commission discussion and requests. Ms. Leverens?
But you know, I'm not going to be here next month.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Without further ado, we are adjourned. So...
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, sir. Please do, sir.
All righty.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.